All right, good evening. I am going to reconvene the February 24th, 2025 meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education at 7:03 PM, following an executive session. For the public's information and for the record, no votes were taken in executive session. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on the district website. I will call the roll. Stephen Lawrence.
Present.
Sarah Beth Delpriet.
Present.
Jay Daya. Lauren Francasi.
Present.
Jeff Hughes.
Present.
Mike Strambler.
Here.
Erin Williamson.
Here.
I'm the chair, Lynn Piazek. This evening Ms. Brooke Hopkins is not with us. Staff in attendance this evening. Ms. Von De Tenza, Superintendent. Ms. Donna Coonan, Director of Business and Operations. Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal. Ms. Marcia Di Gennaro, Clerk of the Board. I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Sarah Beth, any correspondence this evening?
I have not received anything, no.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to number three on the agenda, Consent Agenda. The minutes from the January 22nd regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda along with a budget narrative, a budget summary, the detailed financial report, and the combining financial statements. Also included in the consent agenda are the following policies for 30-day review. Policy 6000, Concept and Rules and Instruction. Policy 6111, School Calendar Revised. Policy 6114, Emergencies and Disaster Preparedness. Policy 6114.1, Fire Emergency Drills, Crisis Response Drills Revised. Policy 6121, Affirmative Action Instruction Program. Policy 6142.10, Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students Revised. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from tonight's consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Stephen, is there a second? Erin? Motion to accept the consent agenda made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Erin Williamson. All those in favor? And that would be unanimous. Thank you. We are marching along this evening. Number four on the agenda is for A, Superintendent's Report. Ms. Tenza?
Sure. Good evening. We always start with our enrollment. Our enrollment is at 8:75 as of February 1st. Just a quick update on our budget. After hearing from all of the departments, the town began the likely very difficult task of prioritizing needs. And we understand that at this point, our capital budget was reduced to zero. Is that correct? Yep. For...
For '26.
Yep, for '26. No decisions have been made regarding our operating budget. We appreciate our strong partnership with the town boards and trust that their decisions will be in the best interest of our community. So in June, our board will be asked to approve a Cade mandated school climate policy. This policy has to be adopted by the end of this year. We've been looking at it as an administrative team and at the policy level. And I just want to touch on it for the board to understand a little bit more about how it differs from the current mandated bullying policy, which it will replace. So the important thing to remember is that once a policy is adopted, it has to be adhered to. So we've been taking a little bit of time to think about the policy and what forms we need to tweak so that when it is adopted, we are ready to implement it in its entirety. The focus on this policy is different than our current policy in that it really focuses more on building a respectful climate with some focus on restorative practices and a caring community. We have already begun to celebrate and align at our school with some of our caring community assemblies, which Mr. Sapias has talked about. That's part of our strategic plan, that whole focus. And I know Lisa might have mentioned this already, but we have children's making Valentine cards. We have a focus again with summer responsive classroom training. We're going to invite up to 30 staff. If we can't get 30, we will invite staff from other surrounding towns and, you know, charge them a fee to try to attend as well. But we have a lot of things in place that will help us develop our ability to continue to have the wonderful welcoming community that we have. Still a lot of sick children, so the full week vacation, we're hoping, put a curb to a lot of the illness. And despite that, every classroom that we've been in with administrators has had children problem solving, talking about math, talking with each other. When we did some walkthroughs at Amity recently, we saw older kids doing the same things. And it was really exciting for us to think how we are actually building and feeding into that system. And, you know, our parts all function together and that's what makes us highly effective. So the last thing I do want to share is that I did share with the Board of Education that I am retiring at the end of the school year. And it was a very difficult decision. I've had a great career of 37 years. And I can't think of a better way to end it than with this very talented group of Board of Education members. The administrative team is by far the best I've ever worked with. And the staff in our school, not just the teachers, all of our staff are the most caring, joyful, focused on developing relationships staff that I've ever met. And it's been an honor and a pleasure. And I will send something out to the community tomorrow in partnership with something from the board. And here I am. I'm going to continue to work really hard until the end of the year and make sure we have a smooth transition. It's been an honor.
Thank you. Technology?
Yes.
Want to talk about technology?
I do. I want to introduce our technology. We have a technology team at Beecher Road School led by Anthony Billings and Jeannie Charleglio and Rachel Robinson actually head up many parts of our technology, but also the website. There are webmasters, that's a separate stipend. And that's important to understand that some of your budget funds support a webmaster or in this case, a shared position. When you don't have a stipended position or a specific position for a webmaster to take control of your site, you often lose flexibility and accuracy and currentness. And so I applaud your dedication to funding this. And we've got some nice communication pieces on our website. And sometimes it's nice just to have a reminder of what is available at our fingertips. This is the first face our community sees. If people are looking to maybe move to Woodbridge, they would peek at our website. We want them to see great stuff. They do see great stuff. We actually met with Final Site, who hosts our website, last spring. And they helped us kind of do an overhaul and culled through, gave us very high marks in a lot of areas, almost all areas, and really were very complimentary to our webmasters on the strategies that they're using for communication. So I wanted to give them both a shout out and let them give you a tour.
Welcome.
Thank you both for being here.
We are going to... I know we have to speak directly into this thing. We are going to divide and conquer a little bit since there is... Oh, I had to unlock that for you. My computer, sorry. There we go. Since we have a great deal to go over, we're going to divide. I'm going to go over the first part of the website and then we will switch. My name is Jeannie Charleglio, one of the two technology specialists at Beecher. That is Rachel, and she will introduce herself when she comes up. Thank you all for inviting us to be here. Thank you Superintendent for letting us spend a little time on this. So this is our district website. One of the things we want to say right from the get-go is that this is, will be, and should always be, a work in progress. There's a lot that changes from day to day. We do our very best to keep everything up to date, active, you know, up-to-date pictures, make sure all our links are functioning properly. The main page that you are looking at right now, there are several boxes located that are probably the most frequently looked-for items. Those may or may not change based on what's happening in the school at the time. Directly underneath those is probably one of the more popular pieces, which is our calendar. The calendar also contains all our letter days. You can also click on the full calendar, which has a hyperlink to the PTO so that that stays active with all the things that are happening with our PTO at the time. At the very top of that, in the bright blue box, is a link to the upcoming year's calendar as well. And we will switch that out when or if needed. Hopefully, no more snow days. At the top of the page, you'll notice that there are six different tabs, starting with District Information, going all the way to Students. We also have a search feature at the top right that Rachel will talk a little bit more towards the end. The District Information tab, that houses a lot of the more nuts and bolts information as well as a link to the Town of Woodbridge page for anyone who's interested in learning more about the entire town. This is where business operations, Board of Ed, all the budget information lives. The Board of Ed, we try to keep all of the links accurate on there as well. I'm sorry, this is a little bit fuzzy up there. I promise, on a face-to-face computer, it is not. All the budget information is also linked at the bottom. Back up at the top, if you go back to District, school policies are also there. And one thing that we have also recently added is the School Modernization tab. So School Modernization is going to house all the information on the things that we are currently looking at and will be looking or will be adding to this. This will probably be one of the more frequently updated pages in the months to come. The Beecher tab has all the day-to-day operations things. This is our mission, visions, and beliefs. All of Lisa's principals' messages, Principal Sherman, sorry, Lisa, are located here. Bus routes, school and district calendar is also located on this page, staff directory. The one of the more popular ones is the cafeteria. A lot of people want to know where that is, so that can be located under About Beecher. Information on Health and Health Services, that's a pretty robust tab, if you don't mind clicking on that one, Rachel. So that has a lot of information on the nurse's office, and she is very good about keeping us up to date. Each one of those has a dropdown with more information, super helpful for parents to know, especially with how much has been going on in the school buildings, so. Back to About Beecher. Beecher in Action, the last one, ties back to our homepage. This is where we try to keep some photos of our students and things that are happening around the building, so you can get a little glimpse of what's happening behind the school doors. And that we will keep up to date as well. We're going to switch now, so Rachel can go into a little bit of the Teaching and Learning page.
Hi, I'm Rachel Robinson. I'm the other webmaster. Okay, so Teaching and Learning, this is where we're going to see curriculum, grade level, and assessment information. So if you go ahead and click on any of those, we can take a look. All right, so Assessment Information, you're going to see our current data for our scores for S-Back. It breaks it down into all students, high-needs students, next-generation science standards, links through all that information that typically the community would ask for. After Assessments, we do have curriculum as well. Recently, the ELA and math teams have worked to update the curriculum. So if we go over to...
Could you mind just clicking into the ELA a little bit? We didn't have our curriculum meeting yet.
Yeah, absolutely. So our curriculum page does go by subjects, so art, health, language arts. So we're going to go into Language Arts right now. Okay, so Language Arts is broken down by grade level. Once you click on the documents, it then goes further into the different units within the grade level. So this really gives just a great understanding of what is going on inside of our buildings as far as ELA curriculum. It does open up into a PDF that has clickable links as well.
Could you keep clicking just a little bit deeper? Thank you.
So we can go to the different grades, could find the overall view of what the topics are for that grade, and then when you click on the units, you can see then the summary of that unit for that grade. It also does give approximate pacing for how long the students will be in that unit.
And that is the model that we'll be moving forward with our curriculum areas.
So right now, the Teaching and Learning and with the different grade levels, currently it's in progress, but when you do click on the different grade levels, it will link you back also to the ELA curriculum page that's already been completed and the math curriculum page. So on the each grade level page, it's just another way for the community to access that information if they're looking specifically for grade-by-grade breakdown of the curriculum. And that is also where we'll be updating other grade-by-grade information as it is completed. And then we can also update other special curriculums as well. Yep. If we go to the Art page real quick, I just want to kind of shout out this page. So the Art page, they've done a really nice job as well, providing information for all the different grade levels, showing examples of the different work that can be completed at each grade level. And then the Art page is also, every spring, will showcase what's going on for Arts Week. Yeah. So last year's included the schedule. This will have the new Arts Week coming soon, once we get full schedule and information on that, as well as some of the artwork that was created for Arts Week. So really a nice page to kind of see what's going on inside of the building and all the hype that's happening around Arts Week. It's always a really exciting time of year. All right. If we head over to Special Services, this page is very important. We have dropdowns with lots of information. So when you scroll down, there's updates from the Director of Special Services, Carrie. We also have information like meeting the school psychologist. There you go. That's okay. Some contact information, information on calendar gifted. And what to really, I want to really point out is that Parent Resource section. That part is a dropdown, and each of those link to CT seds, resources and links, safeguards, procedures, parent guide to special education. So just a lot of resources in that Parent Resource section of Special Services. Multilingual Learners also has a passage under this page as well. After Special Services, we have our Parents tab. So our Parents tab, on the right-hand side, is where there's links to other parts of the website. Now, this is, these links are in other parts of the website, too. We just wanted to also give another way for parents to easily look at the website and say, okay, where's everything that I need to find? Oh, it's right here on the side. So these links you'll see in multiple spots, like the PTO is in multiple spots. It's in the About Beecher, and then it's also under Parents as well. So that's an example of a page that you'll see in more than one spot.
After Special Services, we have our Parents tab.
So our Parents tab, on the right-hand side, is where there's links to other parts of the website. Now, this is, these links are in other parts of the website, too. We just wanted to also give another way for parents to easily look at the website and say, okay, where's everything that I need to find? Oh, it's right here on the side. So these links you'll see in multiple spots, like the PTO is in multiple spots. It's in the About Beecher, and then it's also under Parents as well. So that's an example of a page that you'll see in more than one spot. We head back to the Parent page. There's Summer Programs, the Summer packets. Math packet you'll see is linked there as well. Field trip information, extended day, and also curriculum there, you'll see that link is active as well. So if it's not found under Teaching and Learning, it can also be found on the Parents page. It's trying to make it really easy to find that information that is requested and wanted. So that's the Parent page, lots of information. If we head over to Students. On the Students page, we have links to our commonly-used learning applications. So there's links to Pebble Go, Typing Club, Lexia, Scholastic Go. Some of these are paid subscriptions that the school does pay for. And then others are links, just the websites that are commonly used that the students are familiar with. At the top, there's also portal links for Clever, Google Drive, Google Classroom, and also our library catalog. The search bar. So the search bar, we have worked hard to make sure that we are tagging as many documents as possible, so that way, if you're looking at the navigation and you're still not sure where, maybe you'll find the lunch menu, or it's 7:30 in the morning and you quickly got to look. Just go ahead and take a look at the search bar, and you can search cafeteria or caf menu, lunch menu. We try to tag it in a few different ways, so it pops up. And then that way, you can get to the cafeteria, quickly click on that lunch link and see what is lunch today. So the search bar is something that is just really, we find it really easy to use, and we hope you guys do as well. And we do try to keep tagging things, so that way, the community can find things. And that's just a little view of the cafeteria.
So one other thing we wanted to show you.
So we wanted to show you real quick an example of what the mobile view looks like. This is our admin side, so that's why it looks, this is like the edit mode, so it looks a little bit wonky. But up in the top, in the upper left-hand corner, there is the Read Lines. When you click on the Three Lines, we call it the, yep, kind of like the hamburger lines we tell the kids. So Three Lines, it says the word menu. When you're in mobile view, that's how you get to, all those links are up at the top. So District, About Beecher, Teaching and Learning. You click on the plus side to then bring you to all of those dropdown menus. So it's all still there in mobile view, it just looks a little bit different. So we just wanted to point out that if you're on mobile view, make sure you click in the menu first, and then it'll bring you to all those different subsections where you can click the dropdowns.
And the same search bar applies at the top of this, so you can use it the same way.
Yep, same search bar. Absolutely.
What was the obvious one? That's a mammoth undertaking. That's a lot of linking, a lot of thinking about where items go for easy navigation. I like that you went to the mobile as well, because that's what I use all the time, so I'm always working on websites, trying to flip things over. How often are things updated? Almost daily. Almost daily. Almost daily. So that must take a lot of time. Some things are fast and easy. We've been doing it for so long now, there's some things we can do fast and easy because we're so comfortable where things are on the page, so finding it, and some things are a little more time-consuming.
Right. If it's a redesign or like a creation of a...
Because there is a lot of information.
A new district page. Yeah, that's a little bit, yeah. Yeah.
I'm really impressed. I think it's very good. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
The only thing that I would say just when working with, because we're in a regional district and you're working with, you know, multiple schools with kids spread across the system, the parent portal or the Power School link, like on the Amity page, is right kind of up in the top.
We have it right here on the main page. I'm sorry, I'll go back. I should have highlighted that. So in these main boxes, it is one of our main portals. So this will bring you to Powers.
Yeah, because I know there's been a couple times where I'm like, I can't remember where that parent portal link is on the Beecher website, but like Power School on the Amity website is, we kind of pitched into these.
We do try to keep these functioning to the things that we hear the most responses on, and parent portal was definitely one of them. So this is located right here, but hearing your suggestion, maybe we'll even rotate it up there, but it is.
Yeah, maybe we could change the photo in the background and have the Power School logo or something. That's good feedback, yes. That way, it's a little bit more noticeable.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, you don't use it quite as much for elementary, but it is one of those, we'll get an email, like, you know, go into the parent portal, I'm like, I don't do this often enough to remember where it is on the website. But thank you, this is a lot of work. Amazing.
Thank you.
We can't thank you enough for coming and sharing with us and those who are watching from home.
We should feel very proud.
Yeah. When people ask us about, we're directing them to this.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We love feedback. So if you notice anything that you think needs tweaking, don't hesitate to reach out and let us know. We're looking at it through one lens, so we would appreciate any feedback you have.
So once our video is up and running from these wonderful guys, that video, I think it would be nice to clip this section and put it on our website. As parents, here's an overview of how to use our website, because then they could just watch that little clip.
Absolutely.
That little five minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you both. Thank you for coming this evening and for all the great work you're doing. We appreciate it greatly. Thank you. Good things, good things happening. Ms. Sherman, we're up to Beecher Road School updates.
I had one question on Fonda's statement earlier. Can I ask very quickly? Capital budget. So they zeroed out the capital. What was our request for this year? I cannot remember what it was.
It was the neighborhood of $200,000. We wanted to do the retrocommissioning of the HVAC.
Right, that's what I thought.
And...
The parent portal or the Power School link, like on the Amity page is, is right kind of up in the top.
We have it right here on the main page. I'm sorry, I'll go back. I should have highlighted that. So in these main boxes, it is one of our main portals. So this will bring you to Powers.
Yeah, cause I know there's been a couple times where I'm like, I can't remember where that parent portal link is on the future website. But like Power School on the Amity website is, we kinda pitched into these.
We do try to keep these functioning, like functioning to the things that we hear the most responses on. And parent portal was definitely one of them. So this is located right here, but hearing your suggestion, maybe we'll even rotate it up there.
Yeah, maybe we could change the photo in the background and have the Power School logo or something. That's good feedback. Yeah, that way it's a little bit more noticeable.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, you don't use it quite as much for elementary, but it is one of those, we'll get an email like, you know, go into the parent portal and like, I don't do this often enough to remember where it is on the website. But thank you, this is a lot of work. Amazing.
Thank you.
We can't, we can't thank you enough for coming and sharing with us and, and those who are watching from home.
We should feel very proud.
Yeah. When people ask us about, we're directing them to this.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We love feedback. So if you notice anything that you think needs tweaking, don't hesitate to reach out and let us know. So we're looking at it through one lens, so we would appreciate any feedback you have.
So once our video is up and running from these wonderful guys, that video, I think it would be nice to clip this section and put it on our website. As parents, here's an overview of how to use our website, because then they could just watch that little clip.
Absolutely.
That little five minutes.
Good idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you both.
Thank you for coming this evening and for all the great work you're doing. We appreciate it.
Greatly. Thank you.
Good things, good things happening. Ms. Sherman, we're up to Beach Road School updates.
I had one question on Vonda's statement earlier. Can I ask very quickly? Capital budget. So they zeroed out the capital. What was our request for this year? I, I cannot remember what it was.
It's the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. We, we wanted to do the retro commissioning of the HVAC.
Right, that's what I thought.
And, um,
The asbestos.
We, um, yeah, the, the art room sink, um, and
So what was the rationale of not allowing those funds to be allocated to capital needs currently in the building? I understand there's future needs and expansion considerations, but I would have thought capital needs also addressed currently.
Predominantly, again, I don't think that it was anything other than, let's put a pause until we can find out a little bit more about what's going on in the building. So for next year, let's not do that.
And the percent of our operating budget and Amity's operating budget is quite high. And so, you know, their only option is to cut their budget or, you know. So I, I, I think the whole, you know, all the pieces interconnected. I just think it was a decision they made.
So does that mean that next year you'll be able to roll this arm to ask for this year's two hundred thousand? And next year's request, I never remember, next year's was even higher.
Well, we smoothed them, remember?
That's right.
We leveled them out.
But it will be now.
Five hundred thousand.
Right, it would bump up.
Okay, so they would be made aware of that particular situation that
Yeah. The need's not going anywhere.
Right.
And if anything, it may, you know, when we end up doing the reshuffling, we, we may need to put something more in the current year for repairs and maintenance, the kind of thing.
Yeah, the building is getting older and as it's getting older, maintenance costs increase and
All those things get more expensive.
If you don't replace the capital, then it becomes more expensive, cause you're replacing a lot more than just that capital at that time. So I think that there's also a consideration there that coming back here next year, that, you know, that's something we think about. But if we've skipped one year, I don't know how long we can continue going.
Agreed. Agreed.
There should be some time. Great to know the timeframe that the family's thinking with respect to this. How long do you want the school to forego capital? That's the, is a question I'd like to ask.
I, I have to think that once things unfold a little bit more and there's a more clear direction on how we might address our space needs, that, that that would probably just come right up back onto the table as conversations for the future.
That was my hope as well.
Yeah.
Just to remind everybody that we can't really forego capital.
Agreed, because hope is not a strategy.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So I have a few quick updates for you. I wanted to start by mentioning that right before February break, we conducted our teacher evaluation mid-year goal meetings. And we also met with Carrie Borshining, met with all of our paraeducators as well. It's a really great opportunity to check in with our staff, see how they're doing toward their goals and also just talk to them about how their classrooms and their kiddos are doing. And the teacher evaluation process continues. They continue to work on their goals throughout the year. And then at the end of the year, we will have our end of year meetings with all of our staff. On February third, it was the one hundredth day of school at Beecher and our youngest learners celebrated this day by rotating classrooms and engaging in a lot of one hundred day activities. I think that was one of the days that I texted Vonda and said, come and see the cuteness, because it is amazing. They were doing a hundred exercises. They were taking the number one hundred and turning it into all sorts of different creative expressions. And they were, of course, reading books about the one hundredth day of school. Also, under the leadership of Donna and Vito, I have to give a shout out to my colleagues, because we conducted another indoor air quality tools for schools walk, walk, excuse me. The walkthrough focused on the south side of the building. And what Vito did at the beginning of the year was he sent out a survey to all of our staff members and they were able to sort of report any concerns that they had, not only around indoor air quality, but around general cleanliness of the building or anything that they were noticing in their classrooms. And we have spent the time during our Tools for Schools walkthroughs checking on that survey and seeing what teachers reported. And this time, like I said, we were focused on the south side of the building. It was a really productive walkthrough and it was a really wonderful team that sort of came together and engaged in this process. The PTO once again hosted our book swap. It's not, not a surprise to any of you probably, since you all know my love of books. It's one of my favorite things that we do. There were so many books this year, more than ever, which I think I say every year, but this year there really were more than ever, that our students, every single student got to leave with at least two books and our younger grades got even more. I saw a little kindergarten friend leaving and they gleefully reported to me that they got five books. Ms. Sherman, five. They had to tell me five books. I was like, that's amazing. So our PTO also, in addition to the book fair, they hosted their annual, what is now annual, International Night. It was another huge hit. This year they also added performances from a lot of different performances and presentations from many different cultures and it was a packed crowd. I tried to leave my food scooping station to go and watch some of the performances and I couldn't even see over all the heads, because it was such a popular event. And finally, just today, our amazing PTO, our sixth grade families actually stocked our faculty room. So our PTO continues to just be amazing and we're very grateful for them. It is Black History Month and as is our custom at Beecher, we continue to celebrate that in many different ways. In addition to lessons and activities that are happening all throughout this school year. I mean, it does happen all year long, but especially during the month of February, individual teachers spend a lot of time focusing and talking and learning about Black History Month. But we also engage in some shared experiences as a school, again, as is our custom. We learn not only about the history and origins of Black History Month, but we also spend some time focusing on some famous black Americans. This year, for example, we're learning a little bit about artist Reggie Laurent, athlete Jackie Joyner-Kersey and musician Stevie Wonder amongst others. There's also some fun facts that are always shared over the loudspeaker and the kiddos enjoy mixing up our jokes of the day with some fun facts. And finally, my last update is that we are continuing to work on our CARES assemblies, which is a part of the responsive classroom philosophy. And we have been implementing CARES. We have done it in years previously. We brought it back again this year. And CARES does stand for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, Kindness, and Self-Control. And our next round of assemblies is scheduled for the beginning of March and we're very excited to continue this work. I think that's it for me. Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? No? Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Um, Beach Road School Infrastructure Building Committee?
Yes, we met on the thirteenth. That was right after our successful tri-board meeting and also the second community engagement, which was awesome. So we just did a little debrief from that, kind of narrowing our topics now. We heard the word community a lot, so I think consultants are gonna focus on that aspect, start, start pinpointing the direction we wanna go. We have a meeting the twenty-seventh via WebEx, three thirty, so I encourage you all to join.
Any questions on that?
What's a timeline? Is there a timeline out there that we know?
So the, the timeline is still from the original. It's still looking at, you know, they're still looking at that June thirtieth referendum target, but we kind of understand that's hopeful.
Yeah, that's the primary reason I asked, cause I thought it was very simple.
Yes.
It was an aggressive tone.
Yeah, it was aggressive, but we're, we're still on target. We're right on target, but
And there is flexibility to go into the fall if needed.
Right, as long as you have it scheduled. Yep, you can, you can submit the application without it being done. Yep.
We're still on target.
And would that still be in line with all the grants and all the applications that would be made? Or were there deadlines?
Well, yeah, if you do it, I mean, I do think it's aggressive to do, expect a June thirty grant application, but they, we can still do one as long as the town meeting or referendum is, is scheduled.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah, you know, and you don't wanna do it in the summer when people are gone, so.
It's good to know. That's the one part, I thought you needed the referendum before you go out.
Right. No, we double and triple checked that. Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. So we wanna make sure there's enough time for everybody to really understand everything that's on the table and all of the options and what's best for the community. And, and since they're not all fully fleshed out yet, with price tags attached, it's difficult to do that. So we wanna make sure that those opportunities exist.
And when will, when do you think that will come out? At the end of May?
Hmm, I thought they said the end of March.
Yeah, I thought they, they're working on it now.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, that would give us a reasonable amount of time for the town to evaluate.
I'm very happy. It's an experienced team. You could tell they've been working on it all along as they go, so
That's really good.
I'm confident in their abilities.
Thanks. Thanks.
Perfect. Um, next on the agenda is Hmm?
We have the Ed specs.
We have the Ed specs, yep. So do you wanna say something about that? Anyone here? These three people.
So, I mean, my first thought would be that at some point down the line, we do need to approve these. As these are still draft, I am not sure you would want to approve draft Ed specs.
And you just got them.
And we did just receive them. We've had the draft. They probably updated the draft a teeny bit. They still have a little bit of tweaking. We still have a, I do believe that the company has still a little bit of tweaking to do. I did check with Jim Giuliano from the Consulting Solutions Group and he said that they do not need to be approved right now, but at some point they would be need to approve, but we wouldn't wanna approve draft ones.
Okay.
Yeah. I think they'll stay draft until
Until we give an option. Yes, so the, I believe that these stay in draft form until we've narrowed down an option that the town advocates for. And then they further tweak these a little bit and then they become finalized and then we would need to vote on them. Was my understanding.
Let me just understand that they will need to be approved before the grant application, correct? Okay, so we are going to have to take some action on these, but not this evening. Because there's going to be some additional, there's the potential for some additional tweaks.
Correct, based on which direction we head, but they are here for your review.
Okay. So we have no action necessary this evening on those Ed specs, but you have them and this will be lovely reading material for you some evening, if it snows. Um, I'll just make a note, Jeff, that there is a meeting scheduled this Thursday. The building committee will be meeting via WebEx at three thirty. Anyone from the board interested in viewing that or, you know, watching that while we do our work? Alright, so we're set on that?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have any questions or comments on that? Alright. Curriculum Committee?
We didn't meet because we were
Where?
Yes.
We were snowed in?
We're gonna reschedule.
And we are going to reschedule.
We will reschedule.
So stay tuned. Stay tuned for a
March.
Rescheduled curriculum committee meeting sometime in March.
And that focuses on digging deeper into the literacy curriculum. Our literacy team is jazzed up and ready to go with a tour.
Okay, that'll be great. We'll look forward to that. Uh, next on the agenda is the Finance Committee report. The Finance Committee did meet.
Yes, it did. Alright, well, we are seven months into our fiscal year. Uh, we are currently estimating a forty-seven thousand dollar budget surplus as compared to sixty-six thousand under budget in January. So we're, uh, so, you know, there were some other expenses that came up, but we're still in, we're still in good shape. Alright, on the lower expense side of the ledger, for the five hundred series, other purchase services, this includes student transportation, tuition, interns. We're currently running an estimated almost eighty thousand dollars under budget. Um, and this was up from a surplus of about seventy-one thousand last month. And this reflects slightly lower anticipated expenses for outplayed student tuition. In the two hundred series, benefits show a nearly fifteen thousand dollar surplus this month. This is about half of what it was last month and this reflects three additional employees coming on to the district's insurance. These are the types of things that come up during the year and, and that we're adjusting for on a, on a regular basis. Four hundred series purchased property services, we're currently forecasting we're about twenty-six thousand under budget and that's roughly unchanged from last month. Seven hundred series furniture and equipment, we're on track. Eight hundred series dues fees miscellaneous, including the Ezra Academy nurse, right on budget. On the higher expense side of the ledger, six hundred series materials and supply. Well, we showed as even until this month, uh, when we were, but we're now about thirteen thousand over budget. So, uh, the school purchased instructional materials consistent with our right-to-read grant. However, we didn't purchase them from the required publisher, Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt, uh, so they can't be charged to our grant. But, you know, we have until December of, of this year to use up the grant and hey, it's more instructional material, so, you know, well, it, this is all for the benefit of the students. Okey-dokey and lesson learned. A hundred series, we're looking at an estimated three thousand dollar deficit. This is compared to a forty-one thousand dollar deficit last month, so definitely moving in the right direction. Uh, and, uh, we were able to move an additional sixteen thousand in a teacher's salary to a Title I grant and ten thousand of our armed security officer to a Title IV grant. Um, and we're also getting additional savings from a worker's comp leave. This does, of course, reinforce that question about if government funding changes, if federal funding changes, how might this impact our budget? These were, this would be something we would not be in a position to do in a few years. Three hundred series purchased professional services, last but not least. Uh, we're forecasting a sixty thousand dollar deficit compared to about a twenty-two thousand dollar deficit last month. This is the, the biggest hit in a sense we're taking to the budget. And what this is, is it's reflecting the increasing, we increased the amount we expect to pay for substitutes this year, given Connecticut's new paid sick leave law, which took effect in January. Um, plus, January has, this winter has been terrible for illnesses, as we all know. Um, so there's also been a lot of staff out sick with, with various viruses going around. Alright, so that's the budget report. Uh, I don't know if there are any questions on that.
Let's see if we have any questions on that.
Um, well, I guess just the, the question about the federal funds that we're getting and the potential impact. Could you say a little bit more about that, if we were to lose the impact, if we were to lose any of those?
I will defer to those with greater knowledge.
So where they're coming from and what they're going towards and what that would mean losing.
The Title I funds are for, based on your low income population. And we typically get between thirty and forty thousand dollars that we use towards our math interventionist. Um, Title II, we only, you only get about twelve thousand dollars. We use that. It has to be spent on teachers, teacher training. Title III, um, we get minimal amounts. Uh, we, we are getting more this year. As our English language learners go up, it, it's, it's for English language learners. You know, we're getting about ten to thirteen thousand dollars that has to be spent on that population. And then Title IV is pretty flexible. We had used it for Lexia in the past. This year, Vonda programmed it for Officer Lynch as a contribution toward his salary. Um, and then obviously our biggest federal money is IDEA. We get, you know, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars towards our special education services that we provide. So from what I'm hearing, I don't necessarily expect those funds to go away, but I don't really expect that we're gonna see any growth on them like we have been getting. So, um, you know, I really couldn't tell you too much more, but you can see it's about four hundred thousand dollars that we get, you know, each year for various things that I can only imagine that, you know, the state would have to
Pick it up, yes.
Pick it up, because you have, we have to provide them.
Cause I think for us, it's a small amount. It's like, three to four percent, which in a way we're fortunate. I can see other school districts being a significant amount.
It's just important to be aware and I will send out those, that information in our, in our weekly updates, so you'll have it. It's just important to be aware.
Yeah. And also, I mean, just the fact that, I mean, we've had the luxury the last few years of having of having a budget surplus, which has enabled us to, you know, buy tablets or do some other things that have, have, uh, supported learning that we might not be in a position to do if these funds aren't growing or are reduced in any way.
So we, we haven't received any communication from the state about this so far?
Nope, this is just preemptive worrying.
Okay.
I'm good at it.
Okay.
Anything else?
So the total amount was about four hundred, but.
Oh, combining them all together.
We do have our 457.
We do, so, uh, yes. So now, ah, get ready. Uh, we have a, I'll, I'll be making a motion, and then we will have discussion. Uh, I move that we authorize the Director of Business Services to enter into a contract agreement between the Woodbridge Board of Ed- Board of Education and Education, and the Education Service Center, Region 10, which sponsors the Retirement Asset Management Services Program, RAMS, authorizing the establishment of a 457B plan for the exclusive benefit of the eligible employees of the Woodbridge School District, and appoint the Director of Business Services and/or their successor, designee, as a Woodbridge School District Plan Administrator, and authorize them to implement and manage the Woodbridge School District participation in the applicable plans under, under the direction of the Woodbridge Board of Education. The Woodbridge School District Plan Administrator is authorized to execute the applicable ESC Region 10 RAMCT agreements, contracts, and other legal documents on behalf of the Woodbridge School District, and to take whatever additional actions that are necessary to set up and maintain the participation of the Woodbridge School District in the applicable ESC Region 10 RAMS programs, and to maintain compliance with relevant regulations issued or as may be issued effective February 24th, 2025.
And do I have a second to that motion? Lauren. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Discussion or questions?
I feel like I should give you a little bit of
Yeah, so
Um, the district currently has a benefit for employees called a 403B plan. And, um, it doesn't cost the district any money. The employees pay for it. We contribute money to, um, you can do a pre-tax, or you can do a Roth. Um, and we pay about one and a half percent, um, to the company that administers it from our funds. Um, and, um, it's a rather old-fashioned plan. It's very, you know, if somebody wants to do it, they have to come down to payroll, and they have to get some paper forms and fill them out and send them off, you know. And there are just more modern plans out there now. Um, but at the same time, was hesitant to just take something away that people have. But a 457 plan is, um, similar, same thing. You can twenty-three thousand five hundred, you can defer to either pre-tax plan or a Roth plan. Um, how it's a little bit different is, um, there is no 10% penalty if you withdraw your funds prior to age, uh, fifty-nine and a half. You would have to pay the tax if you had not paid it before. Um, this company, um, Hub, they are a fiduciary. They hold the district and the employee harmless if there were ever any, I don't know, the money doesn't show up in your account or something. Um, another nice thing they have is there are some lower-cost investment options, so that might save the employees a little bit of money. Um, it's online, you know, it's, it, you don't have, you can do it all online. You don't have to get the paper forms and send them off. Um, and there's some other little nice perks, too, if you participate in the 457 plan. You can have a very simple will done for no cost. Um, a very simple 1040. Um, and there's just some online financial coaching and wellness-type things, so, um, you know, every little benefit counts when you're trying to attract and re- retain teachers and pairs. And, you know, here's one that, you know, doesn't cost the district anything, really, at all. Um, so I feel like I'm trying to sell you something, but, um, but anyway, I just want to, um, you know, whatever, put it out there as, as, as a way to, uh, to give an extra benefit.
Yeah. And as we discussed in the finance committee, it's not, you know, as Donna said, everything teachers have access to now, they have access to. This is an additional potential resource that provides more options for educators. And it also gives us and them a chance to experiment with a different provider. You know, so there may be a point down the road where we say, hey, this is working really well. Perhaps we sort of transition to this more fully. You know, this is a chance to get our feet wet, doesn't cost us anything, and it's an additional benefit.
Right, yeah, this company does have some other services that we're interested in. Um, we currently, for our, our subs and our seasonal employees, we don't pay social security on them. We have a social security alternative plan. Um, we're not thrilled with the one that we have. Again, it's just a very, very old. Um, and so, but, you know, not to confuse the thing. We thought we would approach, we're just coming to you tonight for the 457 plan. And, and like Stephen said, if, if we're as happy as we think we'll be, you know, there could be, we could come back to you for, for other things in the future.
Just the rating on the fiduciary.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so that's one of the questions I'd ask, straight up. Are they double A+? That's what I would want to look at.
Okay.
That's a question Yeni will probably ask as well. Rating is important, usually. But sometimes you get cheaper plans and cheaper options with lower-rated guys who are getting into the market.
Hmm. That's a good question.
And so the, so you've got the 403B, and you've got the 457B. I think it's great. I think offering them both is a really, really good thing. I don't know if I'd get rid of the 403B.
No, 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 I don't, I mean, no one's, we're not suggesting that. Um, I, yeah.
And both of them are Roth-able?
Exa- yes, and, you know, if, I mean, not like we have so many highly-paid people, but you, you know, if you max out in one, you can put more in another, and, you know.
And as you get older, remember, you can add more.
That's right.
So this would be a great option where you can spill over. And it's good when you start young in these things.
That's right.
Time value is excellent. This is really good, I think this is. Actually, I've never worked anywhere in higher education where we don't have both of them, so I was surprised
Okay.
to not know that we didn't have a 457B. Cause it's the most common one now.
Mm-hmm.
The flexibility.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess my only question would be, um, these can be very complicated for people who, retirement in general. We don't, I think, do a good job in, as a society, of explaining all the different options. And so, this is gonna be a new plan. Are we gonna bring in some financial education to explain it to our staff so that they understand?
I think that's a great idea. When we, maybe when we have back to school in the fall, we can have a little table. And I have, I, I believe our rep would be happy to come out and, you know, talk to employees about, you know, hey, your, your TRB or your CMERS is one thing, but, you know, you probably can't plan on that being your only source of retirement income. And, you know, any little bit you can put away.
We do have a piece of one of the days carved out for some of that, anyway, in the middle. Remember after convocation this year, we had
Yeah, great.
We had
Great coin for medical care.
We did, and staff could ask questions and get information.
So I would just encourage that, um, instead of just a table, there's actually like a half an hour presentation, because the people who are gonna go to the table, who are gonna be the people who are already naturally gonna invest in this, which don't tend to be the younger people, that could actually most benefit from starting young. So I think if, I actually think it's to the benefit of our staff. If, I mean, almost every year, we do a small, it doesn't have to be long, but half an hour, hour presentation on retirement, the benefits, why compound interest is important, and starting young is important. They, we just don't teach that in school, so a lot of young staff members don't know.
Excellent point, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Okay, Lisa, you'll have to give us more time.
Sorry.
It could be one of the staff meetings.
See, sometimes some of these guys will give you lunch when they come and do the presentation, cause they, they want everybody to sign up.
It's true.
Ask them to remember next.
Do is get them to give you lunch. And then that way, you can be able to have some
We didn't get lunch, we had a lot of toothbrushes.
Okay. No other questions? Okay, um, so the motion was made by Stephen, seconded by Lauren. Um, all those in favor? Yeah, looks like it's unanimous, thank you. Well done.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, policy committee.
Yep, we met. We went over a bunch of policies. There's not a lot, I'll quickly go through them, just so when we vote on them, you know what we did. Um, most of these are, have minimal changes to them. But, uh, six thousand, which is concept and role and instruction, we literally just crossed out the, the legal reference, because it referenced no child left behind and things that were not, um, needed. For our six eleven, which is the school calendar, um, again, we just, we crossed out a line that really didn't add anything, that didn't feel necessary.
And, and we really have not, not done that, offering multiple year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We didn't wanna give the implication that we would be doing that, or that we should be doing that.
And by not doing multi-year calendaring, we were derelict in our duties, right? Like, it's just very hard for us to, it would be very hard for us to do that. Um, for six one one four, I believe we made no changes to that. Um, so we're just up at six one, um, one four point one, which is the fire emergency drills. I think Vonda brought up a good point that ideally, you wanna do that sooner rather than later. God forbid, there's a need for it, so we changed it from thirty days to fifteen days. Um, six one two one, there was no changes. Um, six one four two point one zero. Um, we just took out, there seemed to be a, this, whoever wrote this was very excited about physical education. There seemed to be kind of this random line that didn't, just really promoted it. So we took that out. Um, and then we made a couple of, if you look on the flip side, if you flip it over, um, we just changed some of the, the pronouns to "there", just to be more inclusive and reflective of what our other policies now say. So that they were consistent with other policies. So not much change is there, but you'll be voting on them in thirty days. Get ready.
Any comments or questions for Erin? Okay, get ready for thirty days, we'll be making a lot of motions. Thanks, Erin. Um, CAVE Liaison Report?
Uh, so we did attend a breakfast with, um, legislators last two weeks ago. Um, which was, which was good. We had some good conversation about some of the hot topics. On March 4th, there's a webinar to discuss some of the topics that will be coming up for CAVE on the Hill, if you wanna hear about those in advance. And then CAVE on the Hill is March 12th in the morning. And I think Vonda and Donna are both on.
Mm-hmm. And we have appointments with Mary Leander and
George Caber.
Yes.
Okay, so anyone who wants to join, uh, Vonda and Donna? Sounds like a fun time up on the hill. Thank you for that, Sarah Beck. Um, next on the agenda is upcoming meeting presentations. March is Board Member Appreciation Month, so board members get ready to be appreciated. Um, I will give my monthly community service announcement. Facilities Committee is going to meet Thursday, March 6th, 7:30 a.m. Finance Committee's meeting Tuesday, March 11th, 4:30 p.m. Beecher Infrastructure Building Committee is meeting, as I said, um, Thursday, February 27th at 3:30, and then again on Thursday, March 13th at 3:30 via WebEx. And lastly, um, the next meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education will be held on St. Patrick's Day, Monday, March 17th, 7:00 p.m., right in this main meeting room of Town Hall. So be sure to wear your green. And we'll see you next month at the regular Board of Education meeting.
We'll have to have trees.
We'll have to, we should have trees.
Board of Education.
Yeah, we should have trees, yeah, definitely.
Lin makes Irish bread.
Lin. No, I don't make Irish bread, I buy Irish bread. I don't make it. Um, all right. Next on the agenda is the Department of Labor 2025 Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law. Um, at the CAVE Legislative Breakfast, um, there was some discussion of this. Ellington, um, wrote a position statement at CAVE, uh, breakfast. We, people were encouraged to reach out to their legislators and to the Department of Labor um, about concerns regarding this, uh, paid sick leave law that went into effects, into effect January 1st. I think everyone received the Ellington, um, position statement. Vonda and the BOA superintendents met, uh, with the local legislators and presented their concerns to them. And so I, uh, did a little drafty draft for a position statement from the Woodbridge Board of Education regarding that sick leave law. It's included in the packet. Um, I, I take, uh, no pride in authorship here. Um, it's pretty short and sweet, because I want them to read it. Ellington's was really long. Um, so my hope is that, um, this will be something that will be right to the point and, um, will have an, an impact on, um, some of their deliberations. So I put this forward, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, um, to it, Vonda?
I think what's, what's written here is succinct and accurate and thoughtfully put together. The issue of paid sick leave is something that public education addresses through most of their employees through bargained contracts. And in those cases, our staff have more than what this sick leave provides. So it is a very positive thing for some of our part-time staff that don't have a bargained contract. But for the predominant number of employees, um, especially at the elementary school level, where we don't have period-by-period days, it's very difficult when a teacher decides to leave at the end or the beginning, or even in the middle of the day for an hour or two. It's very difficult, um, instructionally to find substitutes, and it has, in fact, increased our staff absences at a time when we really need our, our teachers in the building. So, we appreciate any support you can give us.
Any other?
Do you need to make a question?
So, oh, I'll make a motion. My letter, I shouldn't make a motion, but I will. I move that we ratify the position statement regarding the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law as presented for forwarding to the state legislative delegation and the General Assembly's Labor and Public Employees Committee. Do I have a second? Mr. Hughes? Now, is there any discussion?
I thought it was great. Yeah, no.
Well, just thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I was like, I should've, like, responded sooner, but I thought, you know. Yeah, no, I love it, I love it being so concise, bullets are what everyone needs. Yeah, no, I thought I'd made the point, well.
Okay, any other?
Yeah.
Questions, additions?
I think, Vonda, your point about elementary being different from high school is so important, where you can take the hour, you just can't do it in the elementary. So I think that was the part they missed out on. I think somebody might've just overseen that when they made that decision. And I think that's gonna be very costly.
I think it's been problematic for the middle school and high school as well.
It has as well, mm-hmm. It has, it has caused problems. And, you know, it just puts everybody in a position that they don't need to be in. We, we don't need anything that's gonna cause strife or discontent. We just want smooth sailing with our staff. They work hard.
Yeah.
Um, okay, we'll vote. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstention, one abstention. Um, Marcia, uh, Lauren is abstaining.
Um, Marsha, uh, Lauren is abstaining. Uh, motion carries. All right. And, um, we'll get that letter out this week, Marsha. Is that possible? This week would be great for you. Thank you. She's an overachiever always. Thank you. Um.
Do we need to add this new business?
Yes. So I'm going to now, um, move that we add action on the superintendent's retirement to the agenda. Do I have a second, Stephen? Um, all, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay. So now action on the superintendent's resignation, uh, resignation, I'm sorry, retirement is on the agenda. Um, so during executive session, as part of Vonda's mid-year review, she did share with, uh, the board her intention to retire effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Um, we have been extremely lucky, I think, in Woodbridge to have had, um, Vonda join our school district and be part of our team. And it really is a team. Uh, the administrative team, including the principal, the assistant principals, the director of, um, business and operations and Vonda and the director of special services, along with the Board of Education, um, our, our efforts to move the district forward, um, I think have been evident over the past two-plus years that, um, Vonda has been here. And I for one want to just take a moment to express the boards and the communities' thanks for all that you have done here. Now, I'll have a lot more to say, um, before, uh, before June thirtieth. But Vonda's here and she continues to be here for us and to work for the, um, school district and, um, especially for the kids at Beecher Road School. So I want the community to understand that, um, this is not a person who, she's given the letter and, and that's it for her. She, she has a lot of work that, um, remains on the table and, um, that she is committed to do. Uh, that all being said, I am going to make a motion that we accept the retirement. This is like so hard to do, um, of the superintendent, Vonda Tenza, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, with so much regret. Do I have a second to that motion? No one wants to say. We always, we all talked about what we could do to make this happen. So, um, do I have a second to that motion? With much regret, I know, Stephen. Um, so we have a motion and we have a second. And I will give, um, the board a minute to, um, make any comments that they wish before we take our vote. We're, we're all stunned, so.
I think it's, yeah, it's, it's what, you've done amazing. We all, I think, including you, were hoping that we'd have even longer with you.
It was.
But understand that, you know, life happens and different, at different seasons, we have to make different decisions. And I will say, I appreciate the notice. I appreciate the notice not just to us as board members, but to your administrative team, because I'm sure that this is, oh my gosh, Lisa, I can't. I'm like, I, I'm sure that this is heartbreaking for them as well. Um.
As it is for me.
Yeah.
But somebody's going to be very lucky. This is an amazing place.
Yeah. You have set, I think, us up well, them up well. I would like to also say, I think that, I hope the administrative team knows that you have a board that is committed to finding the right person, that
Yep.
this is not our first rodeo going through this, unfortunately, but we are well versed, I think, hopefully in, um, in choosing and selecting good people. And, um, I know it's, it's a shock and probably for all, the entire community who's hearing about it tonight and will be continuing, but, um, I think you have a committed superintendent who I think five minutes after she told us started actively talking about all the things she was going to do over the next six months and got really into it and excited and, and we will get started on trying to find somebody that could maybe fill ninety percent.
There are great people out there and this is the best place in the world to work. You will find many. And they will be blessed, as I was.
Okay. Let's, let's take a vote and collect ourselves. All those in favor? Very sadly to raise your hands. It is unanimous. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? I see none. Um, we had executive session, uh, prior to, uh, our regular session, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Jay? At? Eight sixteen. Pete M. Do I have a second? Sarah Beth?
You're on the record for that.
All those in favor? And that's unanimous as well. Thank you all so much. Marsha, thank you.